Evening, everyone. My name is Laura Schifrin, and I am calling the meeting of the Planning Board of August 28th, 2023, to order at 6:31 PM. Meeting is being recorded, and I will call a roll call vote, please.
Carol Hofstetter, present.
Robert Therian, present.
Andrew Shepherd, present.
And Laura Schifrin, present. Would you all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Board of the United States of America, in the Republic of America, one nation, under one law, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
I'd like to thank all of our veterans, past and present that are certainly serving, and all of our EMTs, emergency dispatchers. All of you are important. I do not have any additions or deletions this evening. 1.4 approval of the minutes of July 24th, 2023, and August 14th, 2023. Would you like to take them separately or together? Together, okay. Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of 7:24, 2023, and August 14th, 2023.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second? Any discussion, concerns, additions?
Light discussion. Beth, I noticed on the most recent one, the first paragraph, my last name was slightly different than my regular last name.
Sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. If you wouldn't mind checking it, but otherwise I'm good.
Thank you.
I didn't see that.
No, it's correct there, and it's correct everywhere else, too.
Oh, okay. All right. I'll entertain a vote with that question. Roll call vote.
For Carol Hofstetter, yes.
First name? Okay. Andrew Shepherd, yes.
If it was important, you know, that's okay. It wasn't important for you. Robert?
Yes. Yes.
Laura Schifrin, yes. Okay, thank you very much. So we are now 6:45 is our appointment, and 7:15 we have an appointment. Okay, so Beth, I'm going to have you do your updates, because I think we have about 10 minutes.
Oh, perfect, yeah. So for this week's administrative report, this is generally what's been going on in land use with regards to planning work. Things you should know about, things that, you know, first of all, applications before you tonight is going to be the public hearing for 66 Bayberry Hill Road. It's a major stormwater management permit application. Just wanted to update for the peer review has begun, and we are expecting that report before your September 11th meeting. So the recommendation is to continue until we get that information. The Conservation Commission has approved and issued an order of conditions for this project, and that's on file. So if you guys want to see that, I can certainly provide it. Site visits and compliance. Staff went out to 20, well, drove by 22 Main Street, and a letter has been issued to the owner on August 14th requesting proof of compliance with the conditions of the special permit issued for Best Friends Veterinary Hospital and attendance at this board meeting tonight. 27 Scales Lane, we went, we, as you know, have been working on a request for certificate of completion for their major stormwater management permit. We are awaiting a response to a land use department letter that was issued on August 8th regarding reasons for changes to the plan and remediation for erosion control measures. 25 Harbor Trace, we visited on August 16, and the project is in compliance and following stormwater management permit. Campbell Farm, Open Space and Preservation Development, we also visited on August 16. Let's see. We did know some sedimentation removal work and swale regrading is needed out there. The stormwater system does appear to be functioning well as it was approved, because we did check it after a storm, so. And the department issued a letter outlining the compliance measures. The owner and the permit holder is working to resolve those issues. So the other ones, let's see. We did receive the monthly inspection reports from Mullen Road and Campbell Farm and Harbor Trace. So every bit, all the monthly inspection reports are up to date. So miscellaneous, again, just a mention about the planning board materials pre-meeting review. If anybody wants to come in or the staff is ready to help with questions. Any, so we've also been working on the application and service fee schedule. And I made a table for you guys. It's in your pocket. I know we went over that recently, Carol, and you guys did work on that. So Townsend Fair, pre-MART shuttle bus service. So the service, oh, the schedule has been revised. The shuttle bus no longer runs on Sundays, but has lengthened the number of hours between pickup and drop off on Saturdays, so that riders can spend more time at their destination. So those changes are noted on the website. There is a special town meeting set by the Board of Selectmen for town number 26, and the warrant is anticipated to be opened and closed in the Board of Selectmen meeting on September 5th. There will also be a later fall town meeting, but I don't have a date yet. As far as the NVA community's update, there are a number of items here. Land use has asked MRPC to look at the feasibility of two areas that are mapped without restrictions. One, south of Saunders Road, south of Scales Lane, north of Blood Road, west of Route 13, between Bayberry Hill and Old City Road. Number two, we're inviting the Planning Board Chair and the Board of Selectmen Chair slash Planning Board liaison to the staff planning meeting starting in early September to help facilitate communication and ideas. So the third one, MRPC is to have drafted a bylaw and prepared it for early September. For October, we're going to focus on finalizing the bylaw language for formal presentation and hearing at planning and Board of Selectmen meetings and target other public outreach opportunities. EO HLC has revised the 3A guidelines to offer MBTA communities a path to receive some credit for mixed-use development zoning districts. We anticipate receiving a summary update on this from MRPC in September. Community outreach. Land use staff are working on community engagement suggestions from the last board meeting. Not putting up.
So I got so many emails. So the last email that I got about the MART is probably this new schedule. Because I keep it up in my office, and I actually try to, I don't know if it's done from here, but I try to communicate it to, like, the Pittsburgh housing and whatnot, so that if they have people that live in Townsend and want to go, they may not hear of it, you know, any other way, so.
That's great.
Okay, I'll have to look at that, because I saw it, but I didn't look at it and print it off, kind of thing.
I guess the ridership was really low on Sunday, and of course you have to pay bus drivers more to work that day.
Sure, Sunday, yeah.
Yeah. Sundays in summer, you know.
How is the ridership?
I don't think it's really being used much, unfortunately. Yeah, last chapter is pretty low.
And how free point is, what's the schedule now?
So no Sunday rides. Saturday, it's a longer period between, you know, your pickups and your drop offs. So you can spend the day in Boston or in Pittsburgh or what have you. But the weekly schedule remains the same. You know, that goes on the website. I also put it in, I'll give a copy for you before you go.
I thought maybe, you know, like, maybe when school starts and anybody who's going to Pittsburgh University, maybe.
That'd be great.
You know, that doesn't have a car or, even people may be working in Pittsburgh and they don't have a car. That, it's a really good service.
Yeah, we're hoping we work back towards this way, too, because you can take your bike down the bus. So you can get over here to the rail trail if you're coming out to Townsend with any other economic, you know, development opportunities. An ice cream factory.
Okay, well, thank you for all of that update. Keep my two announcements and implications. Update to the MBTA guidelines. Did that be this?
Yeah, it should be.
The MBTA? Update, okay.
And that's what I had mentioned in my report. Just briefly, there there is some mention in there, in that update there, about credit for mixed-use development. And I know the board was interested in that. They still is interested in that. I think the language is first floor is commercial space. They're giving credit for that.
Well, that's kind of interesting, because as a side note, well, two things. I had sent, 53 West Elm Street is listed to Beth to see if MRPC could look at it as one of the additions to the overlay, because there's 19.5 acres there. But I don't know if it's in the apple fur. I don't know what the topography is like there. But obviously, for the price that they have it on for, they must think it's developable, you know. So that's a good size parcel. It is privately owned, so. If the board is in agreement, at least for us to find out about it and see if it would fit in.
Sure.
And then, so at Town Properties today, we addressed for the Board of Selectmen at 40 Main Street, the water department building. And that is on a small lot. It's only like a third of an acre. And they will be in there until, well, honor before November of 2024. So the Town Properties Committee recommended in a motion to have the Board of Selectmen sell the property as is, kind of thing, but take the steps necessary to find out just what the value would be. So that's something that if somebody looked at to develop, could be a mixed use. You know, so, I mean, first floor and a second floor. You know, a possibility, anyway, opportunity.
You didn't just ask my picture. So if somebody just built, I don't know, two or three family homes, does that count towards this? Does it come towards meeting on the MBTA goal?
I don't think so, no.
No?
We have to zone for it, no.
You have to zone for it. It's the zoning first.
Okay, so if you just had a parcel of land that you wanted to put a duplex house on, that wouldn't count?
No.
But they said if you, we can have, I guess that's why we're still talking, right, Beth?
Yeah.
As far as.
Meeting planning, yes.
Yeah. And trying to put together properties that might have the potential. And so including those properties, because they don't have to be adjacent, it can be all over. So that's why, anything that I come across, I'm going to send over, and, I mean, if yes, yes. If no, no.
If it's appropriate, I can give you an update of all this stuff now.
It is not.
Okay. That's why I asked.
Yeah, we're at 6:45. So is Stan on? We have a 6:45 public hearing. May I ask your name, sir?
James Monroe.
James Monroe, and you're here for?
For Bayberry Hill, which becomes 66.
Oh, 66. Oh, well, that's what we have our public hearing on. Okay. Are you going to speak to all the documents, or is?
Specifically, I just want to hear what's going on in your complex.
Oh, okay.
In a butter? Are you in a butter?
Yes.
Excellent, okay.
Down you go.
So I got you.
Okay. Well, we don't have the parties here.
Yes. Yeah, he confirmed that he was not here. He didn't say whether he'd be in person or online, but.
Do you have a way to check with him? And do I, do I go ahead and open it?
Yeah.
And we discuss what's here as?
We would discuss without.
No, we're mostly, it's just that, you know, we're most likely going to continue this to 9/11 to the next meeting, only because the peer review isn't in. So until the peer review comes in for us to discuss what the engineer has given us, and then what the peer review engineer has given us, then we make the decision after that. Matt will be here as the chair.
I will be here.
I will be here.
I'm the, I got the short straw.
Oh, you did, okay. You'll do, you'll do a great job. I have confidence. However, only will need to be here at that meeting. Otherwise, it won't be until October 2nd, because we don't have a form on 9/11.
Yeah. Mr. Jones' number, but is someone just coming to meet? Or is it someone? Jessica, okay. No, no matter. Jessica is my lead for me to go.
Is this his office number that's on the map here?
Yes.
Yeah, but that's not very good now.
Oh, yeah.
Good.
Oh, you have it?
Yeah. Want to try?
Yeah.
Oh, wait a minute, I can do it.
This text. I have to go to my office and call the patrol corps. We did sound a plan this morning for the evening.
Hey, Stan, it's Laura Schifrin, from the board. And we had a 6:45 public hearing. And see you here or in 9/7888753. Yes, I, I think that he was, he presented with the 7:15 one as well. Are you okay?
Yeah, sorry.
You just worried us. Okay, I'm going to start my opening for the public hearing, okay? In accordance with Townsend General Bylaw, Chapter 85, NPDES Phase II Stormwater Management, and Chapter 175, Article 5, Stormwater Regulations of Planning Board will hold a hybrid public hearing on Monday, August 28th, at 6:45 PM at Memorial Hall, 272 Main Street, and via Zoom and webcast at the following link, which I'm not reading. And here, an application for a major stormwater management permit for construction of a shared driveway providing access to two single-family residential dwellings at 66 Bayberry Hill, Assessor's Map, 9 Block 32, Lot 0, Zone RB. The applicant estimates 120,000 square feet of land disturbance with 1,800 CY of fill and disturbance to steep slopes for project. The land disturbance proposed is a plastic threshold requiring a major stormwater management permit. The application is available for review at the offices of Planning Board and the Town Clerk at 272 Main Street during regular business hours. Parties wishing to speak in favor of or in opposition to this proposal may do so in writing prior to the hearing or may appear at the hearing in person. Okay. I would first like to mention that there's a sign-in sheet, so please sign that in. And then I'd like to have the board members introduce themselves. Carol Hofstetter, present.
Robert Therian, present.
Laura Schifrin. Who we do have on is Jessica, Conservation Agent, but not Tony, okay. Stan, the floor is yours. Actually, it didn't universal.
That's Lucia, the screen.
Yep. Am I going to be in trouble because I read the public notice out of order?
Yeah.
I assume you'll get it.
Thank you.
Yes, there's someone calling me.
Yes. It's Beth. Could I please screen share? Could you give me screen shares capability?
Okay, give me a moment here. I'll see what I can do. All right, I'll, I have to come into the room and do that, but give me one second. I'll be right there.
Oh, okay.
Oh, good for it. Dan, sorry.
This is a piece of property on Bayberry Hill Road. It's three lots. There's existing helps on this lot, which we're not doing anything of that. It was divided into, I think, the A and R sometime about a year ago. This, this lot gets very narrow down here, and there's a wetland down here. This lot gets narrower towards the street. They both open up in the back. And the better soils are in the back, except existence. So we created a shared driveway that, as long as it's a little funny when it comes to driveways, you can only have a driveway that's 400 feet long. Unless it's a shared driveway, then it can be 1,000 feet long. And on the shared driveway, the furthest house can be 14. From the split to the last house can be 400 feet. Why you can only have a 400-foot driveway on a residential lot? That's maybe a question for another day, but anyhow. So we created the driveway that comes in, goes off to one house. Comes down here, there's a little wetland here that we, that we're crossing, and we've already been to Conservation and gotten there. Plus in for that, and up to this last house that's up here. Each house has their, their own septic system and their own well. The driveway will be paved. The stormwater in the driveway will be mitigated by a series of small detention infiltration stations that capture the runoff from the driveway. I know it's got up a peer review, and I'm sure that they'll verify that our calculations show that we're capturing the 100-year storm on site. And they may have some other technical things that they come up with, but we won't know that till we see a peer review. With that, it's relatively simple. It really is just a driveway. It just happens to be long enough and big enough that it triggers the need for a stormwater permit. And it actually triggers the need for major stormwater permit just because of the whole. Having said that, well, it's kind of, we do have stockpiled areas here. They're outside the buffers, also. When they're working on this lot, they'll have a place for storm materials sent in down here. Septic system and a septic system, and a house on house. And other than that, it's actually pretty straightforward. So we have to be answering questions.
Board members, any questions?
What was the dialogue about the driveway again? I didn't.
The zoning is, is kind of, there's a lot of things in Townsend zoning that are kind of funny. On a, you're limited to a 400-foot long driveway, on a, a single driveway on a residential lot. Or unless it's a shared driveway, then that can be 1,000 feet long.
The entire length.
The entire length of the street. Then you can go another 400 feet to the, to the last house. So this is 1,000 feet to there, and that's 400 feet to there.
Okay. That makes, doesn't make, doesn't make a lot of sense to me either.
In this case, really, the only, the way this, the way this property sits, it's kind of at a funny angle, and with not, with the house, just the house was in the middle. There really is no room at the front. So this actually works well on, on this potential site, regardless of what the rates are.
Okay.
And the proposed driveway is 18 foot wide and seven?
No, it's, it's 12 feet.
12?
12 feet, and there's an emergency turnout here for fire apparatus or, and people coming, who only can pass. And they can, and they can pass each other at that second driveway, too.
I'd like to say again, as Stan mentioned, and Beth has stated, that peer review has begun.
Right.
But will, isn't back now.
Right.
So we'll need to continue this until September 11th at this point, okay?
Yeah.
Is that Graves is doing it?
Okay, if, if you're done at this point, my next step is to read the referrals.
Unless anybody has any questions, but like I said, it's relatively, it's a driveway to two houses.
So from the Land Use Coordinator, one application for a major stormwater management permit for 66 Bayberry Hill. This application is available in print in its entirety in the Land Use Office. And that's all from the Conservation Agent. The Board of Selectmen, the Selectmen respect the work the Planning Board does and to proceed in the best interest of the town. From the Conservation Commission. From the Conservation Commission, if any changes to the plans are made during stormwater review, please notify the Conservation Commission. And from the Board of Health. No comment. Last one is, other department, no comment.
Thank you, Mr. Comment from the Land Use Coordinator. Where it says recommend special E and S care in steep slope area. I don't know what E and S care is, but in steep slope area, consider tree plantings along the driveway to help with drainage and runoff.
What's E and S? Erosion control?
Oh, okay.
Erosion and sedimentation, sorry. Just let you know, the Silk Fence straw waddle standard fair to help with runoff.
Okay, so consider tree plantings along the driveway to help the drainage and runoff. Okay. And did you have any questions? No comments, okay. We would have time, and so there's nobody else here and nobody else online that has any public comments? Okay, then, as stated, I'd like to entertain a motion that the public hearing be continued to September 11th, 2023 at 6:45 PM.
So moved.
In a second. Okay. We'll take a roll call, vote please. Carol Hostess, yes.
Laura Schifrin, yes.
Laura Darian, yes.
Laura Schifrin, yes. So the public hearing is continued. Okay, so we have a few minutes before the 7:15, and Stan, are you doing that for 22 Main Street? 7:15 public hearing.
The only thing I have any problem with is that all the rest of stuff is like, it's getting dropped.
Oh, so she should be here. She's supposed to meet with us.
Yes, at 7:15, yeah.
Okay.
I think Stan should let me stay, so I can wait, you know, until halftime, you turn.
If you like.
Or I can tell.
Happy to have you.
Well, I'll just tell you, I know we're here, it's not open, but it's not even here anymore, so we, that's how we.
Right, it's not, it's just an appointment.
That's how we've got to ask for us and ask us to make a few tweaks to the driveway. The one thing that they didn't like was the handicap law, was they had to, we flipped it over, votes, and so, we haven't heard that. We, it took three months to get any, get something from them, and we just came back to that last week, so I don't have any answer whether or not they would have liked that or not, so it's still, that, that's how we permit's still in process, I guess you could well.
Okay.
I'll give you that, okay? No way, no way to get out of here.
Okay. All right, is everyone good with that? Anybody have any other questions for Stan? Thank you, Mr. Ryan.
Everything else, I think that you sent, like a copy on, Beth corrected or mine, it's all just, when's this gonna happen, and when are the permits gonna get recorded, and that kind of thing, right?
Well, it doesn't look like any of the work has been done. In fact, it looks worse than what it did when we met and gave the conditions, right?
Right.
So the board will be waiting for a revised construction schedule. The one that you made for the permit doesn't appear to be.
Adhered.
Yeah, it, it was just for the permit, I assume, to, to, to build this. So we need that.
I'd have to get Dr. Thurgis' input on that.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah, so hopefully.
And, and work is going on there now, isn't that correct? That's what I see.
I don't think anything's happened in there right now.
Well, nothing.
On the side.
Positive. Because that, I mean, you're looking.
Nothing on, nothing on the approved plan has happened.
No.
No, not on the sideboard, I know, so, and she's doing more building work on it.
Signing.
Signing, yes. Like, it looks like they took it off. And it, I mean.
I think they got the one call up.
Oh, the pink? I don't, I don't know, it's just, there's anywhere from like, two to seven to 10 cars out there in the front during the day, you know, and it's, it's really weird. But, anyway, she had a schedule, she's supposed to adhere to it, and nothing is, nothing seems to be in order. So, if, if you'd like to leave, you can. Okay, we've had enough today, all right. Thank you, Stan.
Thanks for coming in.
Yeah, right.
I'd rather stay out of that, if I can.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I suspected it'd be something wrong with Mass Highway on that.
Yeah, but that almost doesn't sound like a big deal, that they came back, of course, it took three months to get like that little adjustment that they didn't like.
Well, nobody's working in this.
Oh, well, okay, don't, don't get me going there.
Yeah.
Everything is, I don't know, they're supposed to be patting themselves on the back for the new, new offices that they have, and supposed to do this, and improve, but I think they're just spending a lot of money.
That's right.
Yes.
Our money.
Our money. Our money.
Should have been there, Andrew.
I was just gonna say the same thing. How come you're not there, Andrew?
Planning Board stuff, that's what we're talking about now.
Yeah, we sure are. All right, the next, Allison.
I can't pronounce that.
Okay. Was appointed as Housing and Grant Administrator to, oh, to the town here?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Land Use Department, start date, next week? Okay, but that's.
She's the grant administrator and housing.
Oh, brand administrator.
And housing, yeah.
So she likes, gonna be writing grants?
And administering grants, and working with the housing authority and the Affordable Housing Trust.
Okay, same. Generally, if they good, they're, they bring in more than what their salary is. No, really?
Yeah.
Really?
We're excited to have her in Land Use, yeah.
No, that, no, it's true.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what Karen ended up doing for MRPC. She brings in three, four times what she makes.
Right.
You know, to where they had to hire more people because we got all these grants to do for the towns. So, hey, if they're good, you got a winner.
Right.
Planning Board Regulations and Bylaw Review, Planning Board, which one's 175-13, and the subdivisions. Do you guys wanna work on that?
If you want to, you can look at the fees table that I made too.
Oh, yeah, okay. Why don't we do that?
What are they doing?
Why don't we do that?
There's a fees table, draft of a fees table. I know the boards had discussed in the last meeting, or one of the meetings, that wanted to pull the fees out of the regs and put them all on the table and reference them through the, so we started that.
This way, the fees won't be in the bylaw themselves.
Exactly.
They'll just be one section of.
Which is a good thing.
And this is the existing fees, just placed in different format?
Exactly. And there are two fee changes, the solar, the ground-mounted solar, and the scenic roads that are in bylaw that need to go to town meeting for, just to be pulled out of it. Remember, right?
Yeah.
So those are the two that, it looks like the bylaw for ground-mounted solar was actually increased.
Do you remember? I do have, I have my notes still.
Even though it was in the bills.
So are these the current ones that we went up to, that we may wanna recommend changes?
Those were the changes made at the October 3rd, 2022 meeting with Mike Bowley, this Land Use Coordinator.
Oh, yeah, okay, so this says, this is, the special additions explains the fee.
And it also adds in, for example, if it's a definitive subdivision, there's an admin base fee, and then there's a per lot fee, so that's, that's where I put it in the column under special additions.
Okay.
Special. I think it's okay. Yeah, no, just add, it's not really an add-on, it's just a.
So I didn't change, we didn't change that fee from $300, we left it where it was.
For solar, oh, 'cause on the side.
The ground mounted.
Yeah, on the revised type of plan application.
Did I screw up on that? I could have.
It was changed to 350, and then we revised.
Oh, yeah, when I, when I updated the things.
Yeah.
Why did I, maybe I messed up when I did that? Cause I'm not, did I do it somewhere else?
And like, why are we going to town meeting over a $25 up?
I think there was a couple places where it said.
So it's more or less, here, this is what we get.
Isn't that, yeah, so for.
For telecommunications.
This one here, special permit or non-discretionary site plan review.
The solar.
Existing was 350, for existing.
What did I do there? Oh, you know what, I was following, I was following another, somebody's, cause I like the way somebody else did their.
Another table?
Yeah, did their table. So I was kind of following their table, only has it looked better than our table. So I don't know where I get the 350, that must have been, it must have made a boom, boom. One gosh, okay, cause I don't see where I, oh, wait, not here.
Is it, is it 1,200 for new construction?
Okay, wait a minute, maybe, maybe this is the other one subdivision. Oh, the space. Oh, yeah. Okay, it says here, fees covered in bylaw can only be changed by town meeting, so currently it's $300.
Yeah.
So I guess we could have to, unless it's changed by town meeting. So I guess whatever this law had to read this bylaw, whatever it says.
So that'll be one that at fall town meeting, we can change, amend the bylaw to remove that fee and then put it in the table. And you can probably change the fee at that time too, or remove it and change it in a meeting.
So, this can be.
It's 1,200. For a new construction, 1,200, and an existing, it's 350, and then for modification, it's 200.
Just question?
Um, we have a question mark on site compliance inspection.
Yeah, so we're, we're just kind of adding that in as some.
Right, that should be in there.
Yeah.
What do you think we should be dealing with on that?
How much? I think that Jessica or probably.
How many?
Jessica's there.
How many go out there?
I don't know, that's the TBD. I mean, other building permit inspections, I don't think they charge for those, for conservation inspections, we don't charge for those, so I don't know if that's some, I mean, that's, that's up to the board, of course, if you, if you wanted to. But, yeah, definitely open for discussion.
Well, I guess.
Most towns do charge.
I don't know what.
Yeah, for staff time, anyway.
Also, that really wasn't ours to change.
Cause they'd be doing something else if they weren't.
Exactly.
I guess they screwed up there too.
Okay, we can change that back, that's fine.
It's 1,200 for new construction.
It should be just 300 then, right?
So actually, we can't change any of these.
No.
So if I put these on there, they should probably come off, cause this is all the ZBA.
We're talking about this table, right, that you made the change, you, you worked on in April?
Yeah.
So all I have to do is just change this back to 300?
Yeah. But it's solar, right, yes.
We just eliminate the new construction and the modification.
Yeah.
You're gonna eliminate them?
Probably, cause they didn't come under us, they come under the ZBA.
So I have to review that, so, the solar, ground-mounted solar bylaw, see what's in there for fees now, but as far as I know, it's just $300.
Yeah.
Yeah, 300 is the only fee reference in the solar bylaw.
Yeah, so I might, you know, might wanna.
So won't the discussion be to take all fees out of bylaws? And so if this is gonna be, if, if we're gonna have a separate fee schedule, wouldn't everybody, everything be on a fee schedule, and it's not a bylaw, it's something that the planning board could change from time to time without a town meeting vote?
I believe that's how it works, right, Jessica? Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
That would be the goal.
So it's only be. That's what we have to do, we have to.
Will the fees only be the planning board, or will they also include the zoning board?
Just the planning board.
Just the planning.
And then we can do it separately for the zoning board and appeals too. Yeah, cause these are the regulations, 175, just planning board regulations.
Okay, I got it. Okay. Okay.
So if I understand this, on a typical project that needs all regular territory review, we're just looking at the fees for our requirements, is that correct?
Yeah.
And then the zoning board has their own fee schedule.
Yeah.
And then the building department has their own fee schedule.
Yeah, the ZBA is the SPGA, we call it, Special Permit Granting Authority, for a whole slew of special permits, totally separate from the planning board, so that's why they have their own fee schedule. If you look in the table of uses, you'll see how many different special permits there are that are, that is under the ZBA's purview. They don't just do variances and appeals, they also do a number of special permits.
We did have a new entrant online, I noticed, at 7:18 now. Uh, Dennis. I don't know if he's pertaining to the next hearing or not.
Oh, it's 7:15? Is there anybody on to speak regarding the 7:15 meeting on 22 Main Street? Friends that marry. How are we gonna handle that?
So, as I said, you know, in the report here, a letter was issued, you all saw the letter. We have received a response, I think I put the response in the folder as well, I didn't print it out, but it's in the folder. So it's a partial response, there are some outstanding tasks that we're still waiting for proof of compliance on, and at this point, corresponding back and forth, we've asked the owner of the permitty to submit proof of compliance by next week. So they do have that email, and we're just going to kind of wait at that point if it will go to most likely the town administrator, and take care of further correspondence with the permitty.
Okay, can you just put that on your, the agenda for 9/11, just to get an update?
Absolutely, no, I think she's, she's, I mean, you're just saying we're just gonna continue this till the next meeting, or?
I think she, she just said, that Beth just said that there was a response, and then you responded back with you needed an update of what was to be done by the 7th, did you say?
The next week, by the 6th, wasn't it, Jessica? We've asked for a response by the 6th.
All right, so you're proposing we defer this to them?
So they will be providing, hopefully, more documentation.
Right, that you guys can address, or have in the portal if we have, if we have any comments. Carol and myself, while you guys are here.
We'll just continue to work on it when you stop, and town, town staff, continue to work. We'll just continue to work on it, let it use, yeah, town, town staff, continue to work and then we'll keep working, you know? Hopefully the next meeting, add some, kind of work.
Can you find out what our options are? I mean, obviously, cease and desist didn't do anything, because that was well over a year ago.
And we don't have.
Year and a half.
We don't have, is that, do we have a bill inspector now?
No.
So there's no enforcement either?
Was there a new guy?
There was, I guess it, it did, it felt true.
Oh, got it.
You want me?
No, no. I don't want that job either.
Everything may get approved very quickly if I have.
Alrighty, um.
So I can provide an update on 9/11?
Okay, so.
I'm assuming there are not a.
If nobody has anything else that they want to do tonight, um, happy to entertain a motion to adjourn. I got a first and a second, are you, want to discuss it?
I was just gonna give an update.
Oh, yes, I absolutely will let you.
Okay, um, there's a lot going on here. There's, they're changing some of the requirements and that's, nothing is official, okay? But they've had, run into a lot of problems with this, with various communities. And so they're redoing the guidelines, okay? In the earlier discussion today, when you were talking about two family and it's an absolute, you designate one acre of land and it's 15 units per that acre. There's no exception at this time.
Seems excessive.
Right, it's, right, so it's.
It's okay if you have public water, public sewer, but we don't.
Well. What I'm, what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing is some of the communities are not gonna participate at all. They're gonna take the legal course or waiver, grant funding or whatever. Um, so there's, what I'm, what I'm thinking, in my opinion, is what, how we should probably think about this, is it's, they're re, redoing a lot of this, trying to respond to a lot of the complaints that are surfacing. So in that light, knowing we still are under the gun to move forward, I would propose that at this point, that we can only do the minimum we have to do instead of granting many overlay districts or whatever. That's my feeling on this, because I don't know how successful this is really going to be. And there appears to be a lot of resistance going on and the government is trying to respond to it. Um, so I know from previous conversations with our selectmen, they don't want to challenge it anyway, they just want to get it done. So in that perspective, I'm like, we know how many units we have to accommodate for. We just decide where we're gonna do that and keep it exclusively just for that. And that way it won't impact all these other areas of town, um, until we have to do it again. You know, that's sort of the approach I would suggest. Anyway, that's the updates. I do have all this stuff that I told you on websites that you can refer to and see the articles and stuff like that. I was gonna try to pre-print this all up for everybody, but it's all the same kind of stuff, you know? So, um, so I'm like, let's just wait and see how this plays out. Well, that's all I have to say.
Okay. I'm not, I'm not really there.
Yeah, huh?
I'm not really there. I mean, I think that we should be doing, I, what I think is best for the community and that is to try to, to make the attempt to at least, um, get the overlays passed, whether something is done now or not, but yet we'll be in some kind of compliance.
Well, I've also been thinking of other things too, and not that I have an opinion on them, but if we look at what's going on, um, I don't know if we should entertain other zoning for tiny housing and stuff like that.
I think we should.
Well.
I do.
No, I know, but we're the planning board, so we're trying to, try to perceive. Uh, my position is we should have a product for everybody.
I agree.
Um, and, but not necessarily overburdening any one particular topic or whatever, um, so those things are happening now and there is a need. And the other thing that's happening is we have this Generation Z that they're never going to be able to buy a house, or most of them. And so many of them are trying, what I see in my office, a lot of them are trying to, uh, their parents are giving the houses to the children, but the chi, but the parents want to add on so they can stay with the children. And that last meeting you had, when you presented all that stuff about this, um, uh, accessory apartment stuff that I wasn't aware of as to the, the problems that somebody you knew had, I was mortified to hear that. Um, so anyway, I, in terms of planning the future for this town and, and trying to make an accommodation for everybody, I think we should be introducing some of these topics. And, and they're just the same as an overlay district as well. Um, so, um, and, you know, I think in providing um, an accommodation for a variety of needs, um, then we can have some standards and, and guidelines so that we can have some oversight as to how that would happen. Um, I didn't, I also wanted to tell you today that, um, I, I did, at the last meeting, I said I would participate in, um, this bylaw, what was it?
Committee.
Committee, so they said yes.
Oh, thank you.
Right, which was, which would be a good interface to, to sort of get all these things unified and have everybody's viewpoint, um, presented so that we can work on something that's compatible for everybody. So anyway, that's what happened.
Andrew, any thoughts?
Um, I know we've already voted in second on adjourned and now in discussion, do you need me to read notices from other towns?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I forgot.
Okay, then I'll do that.
I don't have to read it, you have the discussion.
What do we got? What do we got?
During discussion, we have notice from Ashby, um, some folks from new whip switch. Um, zoning bylaw for property at West Road, map two, parcel two dash 2.1 for a reduced frontage lot. Um, it's a public hearing for September 13th at 7:30 PM. The next one is the planning board of Shirley, uh, notice of decision for a special permit application of, um, individual from Florida, uh, property address zero Townsend Road, Shirley, Mass.
Want to fill something in?
Evidence, I rather, suit, vice chair of the planning boards made a motion to approve a special permit. It was approved, what was it?
Sometimes it's, yeah, sometimes it's hard to tell.
Planning board made the follow-up findings.
I've read some of those and it's like, well, I don't know what the decision is.
That's all right, um, hammerhead lots, does that mean anything to anybody?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
What do they say about that?
Special permit is required pursuant to section 4.3 Hammerhead Lots, special permit and 4.3.1 development standards was a finding.
So they granted the permit, Hammerhead Lot, it sounds like.
Yes, that's what it sounds like.
They get granted a special permit.
And people are from Florida and they're coming north, interesting.
There's the power of attorney. Property owners from Florida.
Where was that, Andrew?
Uh, property address, zero Townsend Road, Shirley, that.
Shirley. That's interesting.
Okay, yeah, right in the front line, um, applicant requested a special permit in accordance with section 4.3 Hammerhead Lots, special permit.
Oh, they didn't approve it?
They did.
Nope, they approved it unanimously. Those hammerhead lot?
It's, it's, uh.
Doesn't qualify with the frontage.
Yeah, so it's behind another house that has.
Got it, okay.
So they didn't have the road frontage to.
Right.
Build.
But they might have enough land.
But that was for a single family house, right?
Well, I don't know that that says that, but it, usually that's what it means. One, one house is here and then another lot's behind it.
No, it was actually Stan, Stan, uh, did the project plans. Could have asked him about it. So that's, that's it.
That was it?
So Madam Chair, it's, uh, personal, I'm sorry, Townsend doesn't have a bylaw about Hammerhead Lots, or are you familiar with that?
Two years ago.
The zoning, I, I've never seen it when I've been here.
No, but I remember a couple of years ago, there was, they're not allowed, as I understand now. And there were a group of people that were really trying to get it done.
There's a lot of them in.
There is a lot of them, yes.
So I wonder if that's a bylaw consideration you might want to bring forward?
Yeah, there you go, um, I think that, I actually think that we may have a couple in town. Hammerhead Lots.
We do?
Yeah, I think we do.
Were they approved on a special permit, or do you know?
I have no idea, it was before my time.
Okay, well, I know Bratton has it, and we see that all the time. And Bratton has that, you know, we see these. Ashley has, we see it in other towns, so I didn't know if it's something Townsend might want to consider putting forward a, a special permit similar to that, it would be through the planning board most likely.
Yeah, but ask Janet.
Okay.
If they have, if she has any recollection of any of the properties that we have being a Hammerhead Lot. And the other one might be Vicki, and because a Hammerhead Lot that I think assessment reduction. For a lot, say something is different about this lot, so if it's a really wet lot, you'll get so much of a reduction in your assessment.
No kidding.
If it is not buildable.
That's interesting.
Yes, it's not buildable yet.
So I believe it's the same for Hammerhead. So she may be able to just look up by Hammerhead what's in town if she's given any reduction.
I'd like to learn more about that, that'd be interesting.
I can pull, um, pull the bylaws from Shirley and Bratton and just bring them, get them to you.
And Papel.
Absolutely, yeah.
Because I think a Hammerhead, it'd be pretty hard to have public sewer. I think it's probably more an outlying situation where there are separate septic systems.
But if you have town water, you know, you can.
Even town water, it's, that's a long way to go.
It can pull, you know, your frontage will be reduced, but you can access your backlot.
Well, there's several ways they do that, sometimes they have easement so over other people's properties. Um. So that, you know, public services, in other words, if you had a, pretty much what we were looking at today here, um, Ben's paper. Which, so there's this land way out back, it doesn't really have frontages at the road and they want to put new housing out there, so a lot of things happen. You know, a developer obviously wouldn't develop that because he's only gonna get two houses out of it. So it would be a private driveway, a shared driveway, which has a lot of deep complications in it, who maintains it and who plows it and stuff. And then there's other issues about the power that goes down there. Um, so that's, I, there's a lot of instances of property owners that have those situations. Um, yeah, including myself, I have, I could have that potential situation myself.
It's worth looking into.
Well, if we're gonna do that, then what do we think is appropriate? You know, what do we think would be needed and, and I don't know with everything that's going on in terms of housing, I mean, all you hear about is housing and then I'm complaining about the cost of it and the more regulations and the more expensive it gets. I think there's areas within zoning and, and, and things like that, and zoning bylaws that make the lots available with a lower, you know, lower capital improvement cost. Um, so.
That's my dream.
It is mine too, I, I really, you know, I, I feel like I don't know how to help people, do you know what I mean?
Oh, yeah, I know what you mean.
Are you still in our discussion on the motion to adjourn? Do we close discussion?
You've given your report, you've given your report, I will now finish the motion to adjourn at now 7:30, 8 PM.
So moved, so moved, bye.
Okay, first, second, we'll call vote, Carol Hawkes, yes.
Robert Daring, yes.
And Laura Schipper, yes. Thank you very much, everyone.